Um, I can break that.
All the same.
I am not.
I'm trying to be brief.
Well, I gave you one and there was another.
Oh.
I guess I can grab more.
I can see him.
Now, you got this one down here?
This is my first time.
Oh, I just did. Okay, this whole guy here.
Paul Gray?
Yes, they did. Another, yeah.
Oh.
Just looks us to the door. You go on. I want you to get that. They put up with you for a lot now here. I tell you, that's a position of this.
Ah.
Uh, mothling law.
Still up for action.
I only tell you that. I, I just want.
Like to call the order for this meeting, the Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals, March nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. Uh, like to go through our roll call. Start with Lynn.
Lynn Heath.
Eric Peterson.
Bill Schnaber.
Gary Israel.
Marla Manco.
Brian Davidson.
I would like to welcome David and Marla to their first commission meeting this evening. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. All right. Third item, approval of minutes from January fifteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from January nineteenth, two thousand nineteen.
I, I second that, but I think you meant January fifteenth.
Oh, fifteen.
I'm sorry, you're right.
Okay, I'm, I'm dyslexic.
That's all right. I, I still second it.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of the minutes from January fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We have two abstentions. Motion carries. Uh, committee and staff report.
I don't think we.
Les, anything?
I don't think we have any news tonight. Just welcome the two new members and thank them for volunteering.
Okay. And, uh, commission member Alex is here now?
Present.
The, uh, residential development report. Everybody has a copy of that?
Yep.
Okay, any questions? Comments? Okay.
No.
Moving along. Brings us to, um, item number five. Public hearing on an application requesting to change the zoning district classification from an SF two, single-family residential, medium-density district to MF two attached, single-family residential district on property generally located at one one oh nine North Main Street, Andover. Subject property is in a neighborhood that is in transition from large lot, single-family residences to denser, single and multi, multiple-family residential that are generally not owner-occupied. Depending the outcome of the public hearing, staff knows of no reason not to recommend approval of the application conditioned on plating. Okay. Les, any comments?
I think that pretty well summarizes the subject property. As you know, this neighborhood has had several cases over the last ten years where, uh, these large lots that are half an acre to a couple acres have been rezoned and then redeveloped either for more single-family houses or for multiple-family houses. There was a paving project, uh, back in about two thousand six or seven that added curb and gutter and storm sewer to the neighborhood. Some water lines were replaced, so it's, it's ripe for redevelopment.
Okay. Can I ask a question? This, I tried my best to understand this. I drove by, looked at the lot and everything. Can you help me picture MF two attached, single-family residential? What, what does that mean?
Uh, it, it just means it's a duplex, not a full apartment complex.
Okay. Okay. I mean, certainly a big lot. It's.
It's a large lot that could accommodate more than one duplex.
Right. Just north of there, two or three lots, there's a pretty big construction going on. Is that similar?
Similar. That's two and three family houses.
Okay. All right.
And then if you would've turned the corner there at Mike Street, towards the end of Mike Street, there's an, an apartment project. And an additional lot across the street from that that's zoned for duplexes but hasn't been built yet.
I think we've, we've had those over the past few months. But yeah, okay. I, 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 thank you. You clarified that in my mind. Thank you, Les.
And Paul Gray's here. He's the applicant. If you have questions.
Up to the podium, please.
Paul Gray, I'm the applicant. Do you need my address for the record? Uh, thirteen nine oh two East Rock Hill, Wichita, Kansas, six seven two three zero. I appreciate the board's consideration this evening, and I stand for any questions you may have.
Is this looking at just a, like Les was saying, just a single, or just a single building duplex?
Yes, the, the property is about three hundred and sixty feet long, uh, along May Street. And the ha, the current house there was a HUD repo. It, it, it needs, it needs to be torn down. It's in such bad shape. It was, uh, irreparable. And so what our intentions are, is to place four properties along May Street. At one point in time, we thought we could get five, but we thought that was crowding too much, so we reduced that down to four, which would give you the standard side setbacks of any residential home. So that is our intention would be to put four, um, duplex properties across that, uh, which would be very similar to what you're seeing, I think, three lots to the north. Um, there's, there's a, there's another development going in with the similar property.
Facing south.
Facing south, yes.
So is that a total of eight residences then?
Yes.
Is that what you're referring to?
A standard, a standard development. I'm, I happen to be a home builder, and actually, I, I build homes in Cornerstone, Lakeway, right at twenty-first and Endover Road.
Yeah.
Um, most of our lots in there are considered large lots, and they're eighty to eighty-five feet, so a three hundred and sixty-foot lot is gonna be reasonably divided into four lots, to, for four properties.
Okay, yeah, 'cause then that would leave at least eighty feet per.
Yeah.
And then each one would be accessed, would be driveways right onto May Street?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep.
I apologize for not bringing a visual aid. I'll recall, I'll remember that next time.
Yeah, this kinda helps us see dimensions and locations.
Any other questions?
I, I do have one request of the board. I believe the staff recommendation was per, was contingent, or recommended or asked for a plating of the lot. And, uh, I did wanna ask and, and, uh, speak on that matter. This is a single lot, and since we do not intend to subdivide the lot, um, and it's already been platted at one time, we are wondering if it was absolutely necessary for us to plat, because that would require three to four more months of, of, uh, processing and handling time, plus incur a cost of about fifteen thousand dollars to replat that lot. If the city of Andover was, was needing us to do some kind of accommodation, I don't know if perhaps they're, um, needing additional right-of-way. If that's necessary, we'd be, we'd be happy to do that through a dedication if that would be, uh, amenable. But it was one of the items, I, I wanted to discuss that and, and ask if, if that was absolutely necessary.
Les?
That's important.
Of course, plating is the preferred way to go, but I've got Lance checking on the availability of sewer. We think that it might be in May Street as well as the water, which would be a couple of things that would be a part of the plating process. Uh, yeah, I think we could accomplish what we need to with, uh, separate instrument dedications of right-of-way and easements.
So the existing plating would be sufficient with?
If, if you remember, this neighborhood is, uh, it's a plat of survey from back in the nineteen forties and fifties, and the dedications of street rights of way and easements are not up to modern standards, and in a lot of cases, there are no utility easements, so. That's something I think we can work out with the applicant and take care of those dedications.
Mr. Gray, I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
Since you would be building four different units, and I imagine, uh, are, I thinking they have basements on them?
We have yet to determine that.
Okay.
We, we've, we've looked at it, and we haven't made that final decision. It's gonna be based off the cost analysis. We're waiting to see what, uh, the adjacent development was gonna do. We wanna be commensurate with what is being built, um, and not below the standard and not, not radically above the standard. But we, we do build a quality product.
Okay. My, my only concern would be if there are basements, they're probably gonna be elevated a little bit from the normal ground level, so it'd be, what, how are you gonna handle drainage?
That is a very big lot, not only in width, but in, not only, I'm, pardon me, not only in width or depth of the current lot, even though we'd be working ninety degrees off of that, but in the current width of that. That lot exceeds a hundred-plus feet, which is quite a bit of depth. I, I believe it's about a hundred and twenty-five feet of depth. There's a lot of room to work with drainage and to get the water to shed from the properties, and, and I would assume that the drainage would follow whatever the natural course of drainage is for that property. If it, that is something that we haven't figured out yet, that our engineers will, once we get to the next phase of development of, you know, our site plans and making sure that, one, the properties themselves don't, don't flood, but we don't cause any, uh, negative impact on anybody else around us.
These will all be rental properties?
Yes. Yeah. And we intend to own them ourselves.
Yep.
Okay.
No more questions.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Have some housekeeping here to do. Are there any commission members, uh, that intend to disqualify themselves from participating in this case because they are relative-owned property in the area of notification or have conflicts of interest?
Nope.
No.
No.
Okay. Official notice for this hearing was published in the Butler County Times-Gazette on February twenty-third, two thousand nineteen. Notices were mailed to the applicant and twenty-four real property owners of record. Uh, the record shows at least twenty days have elapsed between the publication and mailing dates on the hearing. Unless there's evidence to the contrary from anyone present, I will declare that proper notification has been given. Is there anyone else in the audience? Okay. I, again, we're gonna ask the commission if any of them have received any ex parte verbal or written communications prior to this hearing, and would they like to share any of that?
Nope.
None.
None. Have not received any.
Okay. Now, we've heard from Les and the applicant. No public comments? Okay. Hearing no further public comments, I hereby close the public portion of the hearing. There will be no further public comments unless the commission wishes to ask questions to clarify information. We have fourteen factors which we have to consider in order to make the findings and ultimately a recommendation. Does someone want to? Start on those recommendations? Volunteering to read them off?
I'll go ahead and do that.
Okay, thanks, Alex.
Uh, number one, do adequate sewage disposal and water supply and all other necessary public facilities, including street access, exist, or can they be provided to serve the uses that would be permitted on the subject property if the change in zoning were approved? Staff, public water, sewer, and streets are in place inadequate. A water extension might be necessary along May Street, depending on the configuration of future houses. Two, if the zoning change request was approved, would the subject property need to be platted or replatted or have in lieu of dedications made in order to provide needed right-of-way easements, building setbacks, setback lines, or access control? Uh, the initial comment from staff was plating would be required, but it seems like out of discussion, then it could be done.
Dedication.
Through dedications. Okay.
Are we?
Three.
Sorry, concur?
I'm sorry, yes, concur. I apologize.
No problem.
Three, if the zoning change request was approved, would the subject property need a screening plan for existing or potential uses? Staff, screening would not be required.
Concur.
Concur?
Concur.
Four, what fact-based information in support of or in opposition to the requested zoning change has staff received? Staff has, uh, none at this time.
Okay, concur.
And from this.
Number five, if there has been an error in the application of these zoning regulations to the subject property, would the requested zoning change correct the error? Staff, no errors are known to exist.
Noted.
Okay.
Concur. Six, how suitable or unsuitable is the subject property for its current zoning? Staff, the large lot is suitable for redevelopment.
Concur.
Concur. Is the length, number seven, is the length of the time the subject property has been vacant or undeveloped under its current zoning or a factor in the zoning change request? Staff, no.
Concur.
Concur. Number eight, how reasonably well-suited will the requested zoning change of the subject property be with the current zoning of nearby properties? Staff, there is a trend in the area toward redevelopment of the large lots into multifamily that is supported by the availability of public improvements and underutilized land. The majority of the properties in the neighborhood are not owner-occupied.
Concur.
Concur.
Number nine, has the zoning change been requested because conditions in the area of the subject property have changed or are changing? If so, what is the nature and significance of these conditions? Staff, there is a trend in the area toward redevelopment of the large lots into multifamily that is supported by the availability of public improvements and you, underutilized land.
Concur.
Concur. Number ten, what are the current land uses, character, and condition of the subject property in the surrounding neighborhood? Staff, the existing nineteen forties to nineteen sixties large lot, single-family neighborhood is in transition. There is a trend in the area toward redevelopment of the large lots into multifamily that is supported by the availability of public improvements and underutilized land. The majority of the properties in the neighborhood are not owner-occupied.
Concur.
Concur.
Concur. Number eleven, would the proposed zoning change of the subject property allow land uses which might have detrimental effects on nearby properties? If so, how? Staff, there would be a slight in, a slight in increase in traffic and activity.
Concur.
Concur. Number twelve, how would the requested zoning change conform with the city's comprehensive plan and other adopted master plans and policies? Staff, the comprehensive plan supports the notion of providing more housing diversity and affordability.
Concur.
Concur. Number thirteen, do any professional persons knowledgeable on conditions that affect the zoning change request have information or recommendations to provide, which would be helpful in its evaluation? Staff, staff knows of no reason not to support the proposed change.
Okay.
Concur.
And number fourteen, how would the potential loss in value or hardship imposed on the applicant compare to the relative gain to the public health, safety, and welfare if there is a change from the current zone to the requested zone? Staff, staff does not perceive a loss to the public health, safety, and welfare caused by the proposed change.
Concur.
I agree with it.
And I concur as well.
Thank you. Any other comments, gentlemen?
No, sir.
Anything? Okay.
What do we wanna have to support this, huh?
At this point, I'm looking for a motion then.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we move, that we recommend to the governing body that case number Z dash two zero one nine dash zero one be approved to change the zoning district classification from SF two, single-family resident, medium-density district, to the MF dash two attached, single-family residential district, based on the findings of the planning commission as recorded in the summary of this hearing, and basing those on items number six, eight, nine, ten, and twelve, and that we look at dedications of right-of-way and easements to this property.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve case number Z two zero one nine dash zero one. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay.
One down.
One down, okay. Moving on, everybody ready? Item number six?
Yes. Yes, sir.
We have the review, and we have to review and accept the USD three eighty-five Metal Lark additional final plat, generally located at the southeast corner of North Hundred Fifty-Ninth Street East and West Thirteenth Street North, Andover, Kansas. Staff and subdivision committee have reviewed the final plat and recommend approval. Les, comments?
This is a pretty simple one-lot plat. The school district purchased this forty-nine acres with the intent of building an elementary school on it and, uh, CAPS Center. The elementary school site plan has been approved by the Site Plan Review Committee. That building would be located towards the southern end of this lot and the CAPS building towards the northern end, adjacent to Thirteenth Street. Staff and the city engineer have worked towards a plan for all of the utility extensions. The applicant has done an extensive traffic study to think about all of those movements for pickups and drop-offs for the elementary and the more high-school-age students that would attend that CAPS building. I think we've worked out all of those details. This, this plat is only about two-thirds of that forty-nine acres. There's another portion at the south end of the property there, adjacent to the Kansas Turnpike, that I don't think the district has, uh, firm plan for how they will use that in the future, so they've chosen not to platter at this time.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions for Les, gentlemen?
I think Phil Meyer with Baughman Company is, is here for the applicant. If you have questions for him.
Anybody have questions for Mr. Meyer?
I don't have any additional.
No, I don't.
All right, then.
Any public comments?
What's that?
Other comments?
I have none.
I didn't know anybody else was talking about.
Oh, you have public comments? Got it.
I was reminded, any other public comments need to approach the podium? Thank you, Lynn. Okay. At this time, gentlemen. Need a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make a motion. I make a motion that we review and accept the USD three eighty-five dash Metal Lark Edition final plat that's in front of us, generally located at the southeast corner of North Hundred Fifty-Ninth Street East and West Thirteenth Street North, as, as is presented.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to accept final plat for the Metal Lark Edition. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. No one opposed. Passes unanimously. Okay. Item number seven, review and, and accept the Heritage First Final Planned Unit Development Plan, generally located at the southwest corner of South Yorktown Parkway and East Douglas Avenue, Andover, Kansas. Staff and subdivision committee have reviewed the final plat and recommend approval. Les, your turn.
This has been a long time coming. We've worked with the owner and their engineer for, I think, a little over a year now to get to this point on this property. Uh, it's a very different residential product than we've seen in the past, and therefore brought along a lot of new details that took some time to work out, but we're, uh, we're happy we're at this point and ready to approve a plat and move on to construction. Jason Gish from MKC is here, representing the applicant. Jason Gish from MKC is here, representing the applicant.
Give you some time to look it over and see if you have any questions for Mr. Gish.
What's Reserve C? Checking for some other reworking?
Yeah. I do have a question for staff and for Jason. I know we talked about a lot about the language and things, everything being cleared up on this final plat, language-wise.
Yes, they have made all of those additions and corrections to the text that we talked about in subdivision committee.
Okay.
The only language that I know of that is in question at this point is possibly because of the tax increment financing element to this project. There may be some additional text regarding Reserve E, and it's called out as allowing public improvements. That's something that the city attorney and the bond counsel are still working on, what public amenities means.
I know we beat this dead horse.
There was a lot of details that deserved it.
Jason, you want to go ahead and just state your name and...
Sure.
Just for the records?
Certainly. Jason Gish, MKC Engineering, representing Dr. Lee's and his group.
Gary's right, we have the subdivision, it's been a while for on this, but I think we've made great progress. And, unless you have some questions for Jason? For staff? I think we're ready to...
I don't, no.
Take a motion.
I did just have a quick question, and I just wanted to make sure. There's a lot of discussion about the direction of Shea Street or Shea Road coming south and then meeting up with Willowbrook. I mean, has that all been configured in a future configuration of how this is being designed right now?
Yes, the concept that's up on the screen now reflects that change in alignment such that Shea Road becomes the through street and Sunset Drive at the south end would be redirected to connect into Shea rather than Shea into Sunset.
Okay, and that's all been agreed as far as kind of the direction that that'll go? Okay. And then there was another discussion about the tree line that's going along Douglas on the north end of that? Is that...
I have some recent news. So last night, I went to the school district third board meeting, and they had it as an action item. And just kind of quickly, I'll try to explain that. We had talked to Les and staff about the desire from this owner to maintain that or have ownership of that tree road. Right now, it's kind of split down the property line, I believe. So the intent was to try to gain the ownership. And right now, that section of Douglas is eighty-five feet wide. The collector only requires a seventy per the subdivision regs. So we went and asked, well, first with the city, we asked, hey, would you be interested if we vacated that? Or would you allow it to be vacated? And they said yes. So the thing that happens in the Kansas state statutes is if you vacate land, it reverts back, the versionary rights revert back to the original property owner, which would have been USD three eighty-five. So we approached them and simply asked them, hey, you're not, the property is currently right-of-way, but if we vacated it for those reasons I just explained, you would revert back to the owner. Or is the owner, would you then quitclaim deed that to us? And that was on their action item last night, and I waited for an hour and a half and learned about new biology books and all sorts of fun stuff. And then they tabled it. So I don't know, and they said it had nothing to do with the heritage plat. So I don't know what, I don't know what their game plan is. They said that they were going to talk about it in executive session. I think they were worried that if the street widened, that they didn't want to be the ones responsible for giving up right-of-way. So we, it's no, you know, I told them, take your time, figure it out. We thankfully, I think, showed it the way that's safe on the plat. And if they come through in the next month and want to do that, then we would have it. It just wouldn't be part of the plat, it would just be part of a deed. So anyhow, that's where it's at. I don't know what their motive is exactly, but we'll find out, I assume, at some point.
Does staff have any issues on any of that at this time? Doesn't have a bearing on...
No, doesn't really have a bearing on the plat as you see it tonight.
All right?
Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
Okay. Ladies, gentlemen, I'm looking for a motion here.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to accept the Heritage First Final Pla, Planned Unit Development Plan, generally located at the southwest corner of South Yorktown Parkway and East Douglas Avenue.
I'll make a second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I believe I should abstain. I don't know if I state why, but I'm happy to tell transparently why I should abstain.
Okay, it's not, yeah, we don't need to know. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Passes six, zero, one, abstention.
You had to count? I did.
Yeah, I did. It was a little bit...
We haven't had seven here in a while.
It was easier last month.
That's a big number.
Have to go to a second hand now.
Yeah. I used to counting on one hand. Okay. All right, brings us up to item number nine, member items.
Nope.
Nope, number eight, Mr. Chairman. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm jumped ahead again. We don't want to forget that one, do we? All right, number eight, recommendation to the governing body for the intent to annex unplatted tracks, generally located north of US Highway fifty-four, four hundred, between South Archer Drive and South Sunflower Lane. Subject properties are owned or property is owned by the developer of the Heritage Project. The property is generally surrounded by the city and currently has availability of public sewer. The availability of public water is feasible with minor extensions of the existing water system. Access to the track is already provided via city streets. Staff knows of no reason not to recommend annexation of the subject property. And this has been reduced down to one parcel.
Yes.
From the three that were originally handed out here. So just...
As with this whole Heritage project, there have been a lot of moving targets. And to compound that, the city is working on a unilateral annexation of the entire neighborhood adjacent to the east. So trying to move along the Heritage project, we wanted to get the annexation of that track that shows up on the left side of the sheet there unplatted, that's actually surrounded on four sides by the city today. And in the meantime, the developer acquired the two tracks that show up on the right side of the sheet there along Archer Street. We thought we would clean that up in one swoop. But after we've started to work our way through the schedule for the tax increment financing district, the annexation of these two parcels on Archer Street by petition would foul up the notices and the hearings that have already been set for the bicentennial neighborhood. So we'd like to just stick with the annexation of the one standalone track and let the other two run the course that's already started for the bicentennial neighborhood.
Good.
Everybody understand? Working with just the one annexation and one parcel?
Okay.
Okay. Anyone from the applicant need to add anything to it? No. Okay, gentlemen, it's up to us.
Yeah, it certainly makes sense, I mean, to have that one little square out.
Yeah.
So just puts it all into line, then.
Les, an emotion, we need to read the whole description of what that lot, or is there...
As described already.
That being said, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to recommend to the governing body for the intent to annex unplatted track, namely Sunflower Willowbrook Track north of US Highway fifty-four, four hundred, between South Archer Drive and South Sunflower Lane.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the annexation of the unplanted track between Sunflower, on the Sunflower Willowbrook Track. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Now, number nine, member items. Any comments?
Good meeting.
I have none.
Nope.
Well, I'd like to welcome our new members. And it may seem like we're, sometimes it doesn't make a lot of sense of what we're doing. And it didn't to me the first couple of meetings I was sitting here. But glad to have you and thankful to have you fill out our form.
All right, then, looking for a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second it.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn tonight's meeting, March nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
We talked to anybody that voted against that one.
Yeah.
That's right.
Go in the back room and just...